Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's entertainment. Before we begin, please direct your attention to the beautiful artwork on the atrium walls on display this month is artwork from students from Mont Leon Junior High School. These are seventh and eighth graders who take art as an elective. Their teacher is Ms. Tanya Hindon. And back by popular demand is the Fountain Blue High School Jazz Band under the direction of Mr. Lee Hicks. Let's welcome the jazz band.
Thank you. Thank you. That was Brian Mossen on the trumpet in the beginning there. Kevin Drezz on the piano. Jesse Bertucci on drums. That was Lil Liza, Lil Liza Jane, if you remember that. That was, uh, we played the semi-street version and then kind of broke into a chart. So, we'll play another tune now. So now we're gonna do a Latin tune called "Decime Mucho." I like to cover all the styles every year, so, we try, anyway. Thank you. That was Sam Yunini on tenor saxophone. Something kind of cool fell into my lap last week for our band program. We've been trying to book Doc Severson, and that hasn't solidified yet, but I think I'm gonna be able to pull that off in the fall. But, uh, he's getting up there, so I'm trying to make this happen soon. But he's gonna be ninety, and he still sounds fantastic. So, um, I'm really working on that one. But it didn't happen, and so anyhow, my friend Delphio Marcellus called me last Thursday and Friday, whatever, one of those days, and they were supposed to be doing a show somewhere on the North Shore that fell through. So he said, "Lee, man, can you hook us up? We need a gig." I said, "Well, I can't pay you, so we're gonna sell tickets for ten bucks." But Ellis, Delphio's gonna be in Los Angeles, so Ellis Marcellus is gonna bring the Uptown Jazz Orchestra to Fountain Blue High School next Thursday night, and Igor Bootman and the Russian Moscow Jazz Orchestra from Russia is gonna be there, and they're gonna do a battle of bands between the two bands. So, I'm trying to get the word out to all the band kids in the parish. But the tickets everywhere on the South Shore are fifty bucks. On the North Shore, they're only ten. So, let's, let's try and get the word out for that, 'cause we're hoping, he doesn't care how much money he makes, they just wanna pack the house. So, and me too, I want band kids from all over to come see this. So anyhow, it's gonna be next Thursday night. If you're in the neighborhood, come on by. It's a pretty big, Igor Bootman is like the Wynton Marcellus of jazz in Russia. So, he's a big name over there. So, it'd be pretty cool to have Ellis and those guys at Fountain Blue. And we'll take pictures, and Mr. Vetrano will be right in the middle of all of them, I'm sure. There he is, right here. All right. Here's, um, spreading the love from around the world, since we'll have them both, here's "Love." So, um, Allstate, we have a couple Allstate Jazz Ensemble members here. Josh Morgan here was the lead trombone player in the Allstate Jazz Band. You can wave. And a freshman bass player, jazz, Allstate Jazz Bass Player Freshman, Andre Migliore. And then we had district nine jazz auditions, and out of the, what is it, eighteen people in the band, there are nine from this group. So, um, they've been working hard. We're proud of them. All right, this is a tune that was by Freddie Hubbard. Freddie was a great trumpet player back in the seventies and eighties, and, um, he had a, his own kind of style, and this is a very laid-back seventies kind of groove. So, um, trying to teach them how to groove isn't always easy. So, um, we're going to groove on this one, and you're gonna hear a trumpet solo from the back there from Clark, Clark Lambert. So here's "Povo." This was arranged, by the way, by a Mandeville gentleman named Eric Morales, who lives a few miles from Fountain Blue, and his kids go to Lakeshore High School. So, um, we're keeping this one in the neighborhood. So, here's "Povo." That was Clark Lambert on the flugelhorn solo. And Sam Yunini on tenor sax. Let me introduce them. On Barry sax, Linus Jack, senior. Tenor sax, Colton Scarianno is a sophomore. Our lead alto player is Matt Brasselman. You may know his dad. Matt is a freshman. Cameron Field on alto sax, a junior. Sam Yunini is a senior. Austin Kelly is a sophomore trombone player. Josh Morgan, trombone, senior. Sam DeCody, sophomore trombone. Ford Lambert, one of the Lambert clan, a freshman trombone player. Blake Gonzalez on bass trombone is junior. Blake was the Allstate Symphonic Band, which is the top group in the Allstate Bands. He was their bass trombone player, so he did a great job there. Duncan Perez, one of our new, new members, who joined us this semester on trumpet. Alan Cuff, Alan Cuff on trumpet, also a sophomore. Connor Wright, a freshman trumpet player. Our split lead trumpet player, Clark Lambert. Our other split lead is Brian Mossen. You heard some solos from him, too. And then Nathan Sheffield is a junior. Brian's a sophomore, the other two guys are juniors. The cool thing is that there's only four seniors, so that's even more, better. Jesse Bertucci on drums. Grant Lambert on guitar. Andre Migliore, freshman on bass. And Kevin Drezz on piano. I never had a chance to introduce them before, but I also didn't have to kill time, so. All right, we're going to play one more piece called "Pick Up the Pieces." And I wanna say thank you to the administration here at the St. Tammany Parish, and to the school board members. I personally wanna thank you for fighting the fight that we were all thinking in our heads all along for us, that we couldn't fight it. Thank you for stepping to the plate and backing us all up. We really appreciate it. I appreciate it from my heart, for what we do. My wife is the band director at Lake Harbor, and we are in no better place, and we love it here, and I hope we're here for a long, long time, as long as they let us. So, thank you. And we love it here, and I hope we're here for a long, long time, as long as they let us, so, thank you. Thank you very much, Fountain Blue High School Jazz Ensemble One Band.
Ms. Randolph, would you lead us in the roll call, please?
Mr. Heineken?
Here.
Mr. Derriman?
Here.
Mr. Lou?
Here.
Mr. Howell?
Here.
Mrs. Tipton?
Here.
Mr. Jeter?
Here.
Mrs. Sealy?
Here.
Mrs. Muller?
Present.
Mr. Bettencourt?
Here.
Mr. Womack?
Here.
Mr. Payne? Mr. Lamar?
Mr. Jeter?
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mrs. Wellsario?
Here.
Thank you very much. Will now be led in the invocation pledge by Mr. Alfred.
Dear Heavenly Father, bless each and every one of us that's here tonight. Give us the knowledge to conduct a business as you see forth. And thank you for the Fountain Blue High School Jazz Band that did an excellent job for us this evening. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred. I'd like to welcome you all to our January 16th, 2014 meeting. We'll begin with our recognition of visitors. Mr. Fols, would you please help us recognize the folks from the Children's Museum of St. Tammany?
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Ms. Heintz and board members. Proud to announce to you tonight the results of-
Our annual Black and Gold Day. This is the fourth year that we sponsored that, and we partnered with the Children's Museum of St. Tammany for this very worthwhile effort. All the money collected, every penny of it, goes to benefit the creation of the Children's Museum. This is a great project and one that will create a fun and interactive learning environment for our children and our families across the region for many, many years to come. On November 15th, for a dollar or more donation, students and staff were able to wear their favorite team jerseys and hats to cheer on our New Orleans Saints. Channel 13 visited Marigny Elementary on Black and Gold Day. And let's take a look at that video recap.
The New Orleans fanbase has been legendary around the NFL, and nowhere is that more apparent than at Marigny Elementary where the students donated a dollar to show off their black and gold spirit.
They've been doing that since probably the year that we won the Super Bowl. And, um, so I just let them know, "We're having a pep rally, I need my cheerleaders ready to go," and they're, they're, they're on it.
What makes this pep rally unique is that it transcends sports and benefits the St. Tammany area in a very special way, with the donated proceeds going to help fund a brand-new Children's Museum.
We all know what the Saints have meant to all of our communities around here, so that's important. And to tie it in with something like the museum, it just really goes hand in hand.
The Children's Museum gives kids that big place to go away from school where they can learn, they can create, they can explore, they can imagine.
Black and Gold Day wasn't limited to Marigny, with Superintendent Fols urging all the schools in the district to get out and cheer for the Saints.
I think it's just another opportunity to give back to the community and show to the community that we value projects such as the Children's Museum.
In a St. Tammany school, even Saints pep rallies can turn into opportunities to learn and grow with the young fans watching what it means to work together to reach their goals.
We like to just engage the kids in everything that we do here at school. So the little video clip gets them going, gets them to see that Drew is the team leader, we have team leaders here, but everybody is a part of the team.
And a perfect example of a community uniting to make a local Children's Museum a reality.
And I don't think of any organization that will benefit more from it than the children in our school system.
Let Sharp, Channel 13.
If the Saints would have only cooperated, we would have, um... Tonight, I'm happy to report to you, board members, Ms. Heintz, that we raised eighteen thousand eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents for the Children's Museum, and that's over a thousand dollars more than a year ago. And we have a lot of people from the Children's Museum that are here tonight. I'm gonna ask Ann to come first and introduce everybody that's here. Ask them to come up, and then we'll present the check. For some reason, when we give away money, a lot of people come, so, um, we're happy to have them all here, and I'm gonna let Ann introduce everybody, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Fols. Um, we love Black and Gold Day because it gives the opportunity for every child to say, "Once the museum is here and built, I helped to build that museum." Um, and so we are just very excited that so many people can be a part of that. This year, we had even the community involvement increase tremendously. We had so many local businesses that were really interested in participating in their own special way, and so our, um, our business revenue, you know, more than tripled this year. So we were very excited that the entire community seems to really embrace this project. And of course, Mr. Fols being the leader of this particular day, through the school system, the faculty and the staff, and his leadership, we raised, to date, through these four Black and Gold years that we've had, almost eighty-five thousand dollars. So that is very significant. And it will go a long way in helping us to build the actual project. We have several guests with us tonight, so I'm gonna turn around because I don't have them memorized in my head. Um, but we have Toni Lemoine, who is a community attorney in the area, as well as someone in her, in the office as well, and that's Gretchen. And, uh, Ockman? Okay, I want to make sure I said her name correctly. We have Leslie Martin, who's also the principal, that you've noticed, um, when you were watching the video that was interviewed from Marigny Elementary. We also have Lisa Barnett, who is the president of the Board of Trustees for the Children's Museum. She is the driving force of the entire project. Um, and this is basically her full-time job, that she doesn't get paid for, but we really appreciate her. Um, we also have Rebecca Donary, Phyllis, and Jules Geist, Leanne Wall, and also, um, I'm drawing a blank, Karen Riche. I don't know why, I just drew a blank on her, I've been knowing her for years. I actually saw a picture of you and I doing the attic sale together years and years ago today. Um, so we would like for all of them to come up, if you could. And, um, before we leave the podium, though, we would like Leslie Martin to sort of tell you what our next stop is, because I don't know how many of you are familiar, but we do have an interim location that will be breaking ground very, very shortly. It's called Kidstown, and it will be a place for students to come and take field trips and learn. And, um, Leslie is a big part of that particular development in terms of the education that's gonna be taking place there.
Hi, thank you so much, it's so nice to see you. Yes, we are very excited about our first stop at Kidstown, which is going to be at Coop Drive behind the, um, the Trace and the Kids Connection Playground, so a really great connection there. And actually, yesterday, um, I met with a group of St. Tammany teachers and some, also some preschool teachers and, um, people from daycare centers to meet at Marigny to start to develop the curriculum that will drive the activities that go on at Kidstown for our first location. So we're really, really excited about that. I'd like to thank Peggy Sharp, who's also working very closely with me, um, with the school system connection. So, um, thank you so much. I'm hoping our kids can get on a bus and come up the road to Coop Drive instead of on a bus across the lake, okay? Thank you so much.
On behalf of our school system, all the students, faculty, staff, school board members, we want to present this check to the Children's Museum for eighteen thousand forty, eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate everything. And we love our kids, our little hoodats across St. Tammany, it's a great day every year. Thank you.
Right, also, under recognition of visitors, Mr. Bettencourt says to recognize someone.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. With us tonight is the principal of Fountain Blue, Mr. Johnny Vetrano. Also with Mr. Vetrano is the leader of the jazz band, Mr. Lee Hicks, and I'd like him to come up and tell everybody about a special event coming up next Thursday. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, we had a little special thing fall into our laps last week, and I got a phone call from Delphio Marcellus, and we'll be presenting a concert, a battle of the bands, between Ellis Marcellus and the Uptown Jazz Orchestra, and Igor Butman, spelled B-U-T-M-A-N, if anybody wants to Google him. Um, and his, his big band called the Moscow Big Band from Moscow, Russia. And they're gonna do a battle of bands, and they're labeling it, uh, "The Kremlin Versus New Orleans." So, uh, it's gonna be a great show, and I hope everybody can come, and I hope we have as many student musicians come to watch these incredible musicians from around the world come and play in our location here in Mandeville, so, thank you very much.
What time is it, Mr. Hicks?
It starts at seven o'clock at Fountain Blue High School Auditorium, and tickets are general admission, ten dollars, and we're gonna welcome anyone. It's gonna be a family thing, and I think the kids are gonna get to meet, Ellis Marcellus is gonna be there, and a lot of the big names, Herlin Riley, who played with just about everybody in New Orleans, and a lot of the big-name New Orleans musicians. And sometimes, some of the other Marcellus family happens to show up. So, I don't know that they're all in town, but if they are, I'm sure Dad will be there, and who knows if Branford and Wynton might just drop by, so. Anyhow, we hope to see everybody there, thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to, um, Agenda Item E, which is Special Recognitions, United States Youth Program, Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz, board members. Tonight, we are pleased to announce Mandeville High School student Patrick Flanagan has been selected as one of only two students to represent Louisiana as a delegate to the United States Senate Youth Program this year. One of two across the entire state of Louisiana. Patrick is here tonight with his parents, Deborah Hankels and Donald Flanagan, and his principal, Mr. Bundy, and also his sister is here with him as well tonight. In early March, Patrick will get to travel to Washington DC to take part in the fifty-second Annual Washington Week to experience our government in action. He will also receive a five-thousand-dollar college scholarship to be used in accordance with the United States Senate Youth Program Guidelines, which encourage undergraduate studies in history and political science. Patrick is awesome. He's a leader at Mandeville High School. Not only is he the senior class president, he is also captain of the tennis team. He is the youth governor of Louisiana and the president of the Louisiana Legislative Youth Advisory Council. Just recently, he was appointed to serve on the Legislative Tuition Task Force as a student representative. Patrick has an excellent academic record as well. He's in talented theater and has participated in seven different mainstage productions. He has represented Mandeville High School in both district and state literary rarely, and won numerous other academic awards. He has taken six AP tests, and on five of those six tests, he scored a five, the highest possible score. He has also been awarded the AP Scholar with Distinction Award for his scores. He scored a thirty-three on his ACT and is tied for first out of four-hundred-and-twenty-three students at Mandeville High School. Mr. Bundy says about Patrick that he is conscientious, honest, polite, respectful, and friendly. He is truly an outstanding citizen who will continue to make a positive difference. Please join me tonight in congratulating Patrick on his outstanding achievement. Thank you, Patrick, for representing our school system and for everything that you have done and the bright future that you have in front of you. Please come up and be recognized.
Thank you very much for recognizing me. I do just want to say that it's because of the St. Tammany Parish Schools, principals like Mr. Bundy, the teachers that I've been so privileged to have, including Ms. Barrios, who's in the room today, who I had in junior high, and my supportive family, Mom, Dad, and Andy, that I'm able to do all these things and have this award. So thank you so much.
Congratulations, Patrick. Alright, moving on to item number two, which is Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Government Finance Officers Association of Louisiana. We have remarks from Ms. Gail Franzen, Louisiana Legislative Auditor.
This plaque is very heavy, I'll just tell you that. It's with great pleasure that, once again, the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office presents the St. Tammany Parish School Board on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2012. We, we just can't stress how, how important it is to the public and, you know, to report and, and have good financial reports. It, it's, it's a service that everyone can appreciate. Um, so I'm gonna start, I'm gonna hand this to Gary Silva.
Thank you, Ms. Franzen, for being here with us this evening. Alright, that brings us to number three, which is Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, American School Board Officers International. We have remarks tonight by Mr. Mickey Simon, Laporte CPAs and Business Advisors.
Thank you. Laporte CPAs and Business Advisors appreciates the opportunity to serve as the auditor for the St. Tammany Parish School Board for the past three fiscal years, most recently, June 30th, 2013. This evening, we're here to present the 2012 Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is awarded by the Association of School Business Officials, also known as ASBO. This award certifies that the school board has presented its comprehensive annual financial report to the ASBO panel for a critical review and evaluation, and that the report was judged to be in compliance with the principles and practices recognized- to be in compliance with the principles and practices recognized by ASBO. Only twenty-two school boards, Louisiana school boards, earned this certificate for 2012 reporting, by the way, and St. Tammany Parish School Board has now received this award for the twenty-fifth consecutive year, being one of only seven Louisiana school boards currently at this mark. A quarter century of awards is an unambiguous testimony to the highest standards in school financial reporting, and this can only be accomplished through many hours of hard work and dedication from Mr. Terry Fortenberry, Mr. Gary Silva, and the entire Business Affairs Staff. It's our honor and privilege to present the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting to the St. Tammany Parish School Board.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening. We are very proud to receive these awards and appreciate very much Ms. Fortenberry and her staff and all the hard work you all put in to make us look good.
Ms. Heinz, if I could, could we recognize, I think Terry, of course, is here, but she also has her whole staff over there with them, if they could stand up and be recognized as well. As we know, it's a total team effort, and Terry and her people do a great job, and want to also recognize and thank Ms. Araby for her leadership in that department. She stays out of their way, and they do a good job. So, thank you to y'all, and congratulations, Terry, for your work.
All right, item number four is Locue Awards. We have remarks from Mrs. Araby.
Locue, or Louisiana Association for Computer Using Educators, has been actively involved in promoting technology use in Louisiana for over twenty-eight years. Each year, they recognize educators who have effectively integrated the use of computers into the education process. Educators are nominated and chosen because of their innovative technology use. Tonight, I'm here again, as we have been every year for the last few years. I'm proud to recognize three St. Tammany educators who are deserving recipients of the Locue Awards. They are Dr. Pat Edmiston, Dr. April Owens, and Lucille, or better known to us as Inky Landry, are all three here tonight. I'd like them to all three come up at once. Locue is divided into eight regions, the same as the congressional districts. Winners are chosen from each region for various categories. This year, Dr. Edmiston, a teacher from Covington High, was the Region Two High School Educator winner. Dr. Owens, principal of Bonnecole Elementary, was the Region Two Leader Educator winner, and she was also selected as the State Leader Educator winner this year. Very proud of all of you. Another award that was given this year is called the Making It Happen Award. This award comes from ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education. Locue is the local affiliate for ISTI. The Making It Happen Award is an internationally recognized program for educators and leaders in the field of educational technology integration in K through twelve schools. The program identifies and rewards educational technology leaders from around the world for their commitment and innovation. And when I think of the word or the phrase "making it happen," Inky's name does come to mind, because she has been here for many years, and if you need something to happen, if you go to Inky, she's going to make it happen. This award is not given out yearly. In fact, this is only the third member of Locue to receive such an award in twenty-eight years. This year's recipient is Lucille, or Inky, Landry, as we well know. At least the awards that they were given, but I believe what Inky is most proud of is I wanted her to share her pink jacket, "Making It Happen." I want to thank you, ladies, for coming tonight, and I especially want to thank you for your contributions, because at the end of the day, it's our students who are the winners because of the work that you do each and every day. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Araby, and thank you to the three ladies who won those Locue Awards. United Way Superintendent's Awards will have remarks by Mr. Pete Javia.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, members of the board. It's a pleasure for us to present the United Way Superintendent's Awards tonight. As you know, a few months ago, we had one of our staff members who retired, and this is something that was very dear and close to his heart. So, we asked Bill if he wouldn't mind come helping train a couple of people in our office to do his job as the United Way Coordinator, and he so graciously accepted, and it's something that Bill really, really believes United Way, and he does a tremendous job with it. I did give Kevin a cane in case he started talking too much to pull him off of the stage, but I would like to welcome, and we're going to let Mr. Brady give the awards. We appreciate him coming tonight, and Mr. DeRousse and Ms. Sharp will be helping him. Thank you, Mr. Brady. We appreciate your efforts.
Mr. Javia, I just wanted to find out who signs my timesheet. Mr. Foles, I want to thank you and Pete and Cheryl for not only the financial support that you give to the United Way, but that your total support to the program. It would not work, would not function in this school system without your help. Also, I've been very, very blessed to have Kevin and Peggy work closely with me this year. And as always, Pete, I do appreciate your personal interest in allowing Corinne Blanchard and Debbie Guerrero to continue to work with me, because they really are the heroes who do all the work, and I, I get to come once a year and make a little talk for the United Way. We're very, very pleased that our students and our faculty and our employees this year raised over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the United Way. There are over thirty-five thousand individuals in St. Tammany Parish that benefit from some of the, one of the different services that the United Way offers to our citizens. And as I'm always fond of saying, and some of you may be tired of hearing, the United Way is a helping hand and not a handout, and that's one of the reasons I feel very comfortable and continue to work with them. I want to also congratulate our leaders in this particular effort this year, starting with our hundred percent participation schools and sites. That's the most difficult thing to do. I say it all the time, is to get a hundred percent of your employees that are assigned to a site to participate. Very, very difficult. So, tonight, we're very proud to present the following schools and sites. Baylacon Middle School, Kimberly Cootie, Kimberly Cootie, and Henrietta Jacobs. Chodima Elementary School, Gary Marlborough and Daphne Lowe.
Gary didn't want to come up because he's afraid that both of us would mess up the lighting.
Mandeville Elementary School, Chantel Smith and Edward Stromeyer. Marionie Elementary School, Leslie Martin and Lauren Hoover.
Lauren did all the work, and you just came up to get the plaque? Oh, okay. That's why you're the principal, you get to make those calls.
Pitcher Junior High School, Raphael Tillman and Charles Stromeyer.
Charles is really Eddie's younger brother.
Poncha Train Elementary, Kim Thomas and Suzie Clybert.
I brought my work.
That's a lesson for Marionie to understand. Leslie's a hog.
Covington Annex, Chris O'Regan, and his coordinator's not able to be with us tonight, Jennifer Bone, but Chris is here. Slade Hill Annex, Mike Soniat, and Kathy Spadoni's not able to be with us tonight, but she's a coordinator too. Transportation Office, Kathy Amy, and Joyce Smith is a coordinator, is not able to be Tree Technology Center and Energy Management, Inky Landry, on behalf of Melody Swang, who is in the booth, and Rhett Sharp, who's unable to be with us tonight. Melody told me that Rhett was at a wedding. I said, "Did he invite his mama?" But they're not sure about that. The award presented to the school with the most student dollars raised is Woodlake Elementary again, and I can tell you, this is just a fantastic amount of money for a school that size, four thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Award presented to the school with the most employee dollars raised, Fountain Blue High School, Johnny Vitrono, principal, and Colonel Terry Douglas did an outstanding job at Fountain Blue High School, and we're very, very proud. Johnny, would you come forward and receive the award? They raised thirty-seven hundred dollars at Fountain Blue High. Award presented to the site with the most employee dollars raised, and I'm very proud again, once again, to say it's to the St. Tammany Parish School Board Central Office of CJ Shane Administrative Complex. And Kevin, I'm going to ask you if you'd accept this on behalf of the school system. Now, to the, to the larger awards. The awards presented to the outstanding school or sites, this is the award to the outstanding site, and that's all based upon a formula for capital giving, the percentage over goal, and the, the number of people that do participate, and that's, goes this year to the site to Chris O'Regan and the Covington Annex with the help of Jennifer Bone. Chris? Our high school winner, Fountain Blue High School, Johnny Vitrono and Colonel Terry Douglas.
I know you'll tell Colonel Douglas how proud we are of the work that you've done. I know you've helped him a lot, but he certainly did a great job.
The junior high division, Madisonville Junior High, Dwayne Kern and Jennifer Ostendahl.
I'm going to give this to Jennifer, because I know she did the work. Glad to get Gary in here, we really shot up.
And to the elementary school, Alton Elementary, Shanette Abear and Phyllis Washington.
You know, those of you who know anything about Alton, it's not the largest school in the parish, but every year, they do a fantastic job, and we certainly appreciate your job.
And, Mr. Javia, thank you for those few moments on the agenda.
Mr. Brady, we appreciate you handling this for us again this year, and I might say you look very well rested. And we appreciate all of our schools. You can see that not only do our students give back, but our teachers are giving back and all the people at the schools, and we really appreciate those efforts for the United Way. All right, we'll move on to public comment. We have four people who signed up for our three minutes. We'll give just a minute for the audience to clear. Thank you all for being with us. All right, Mr. Ralph Rochto, if you'd please come forward, and if you'd state your name.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here. My name is, my name is Ralph Rochto. I run a website called KillCommonCor.com. I run it out of my own pocket with no funding from anyone. This is the way that I give back. Kill Common Core is still developing, and I want to commend the school board on their resolution to withdraw from Common Core, state standards, the resolution that you sent up to the Bessie Board. You have been commended from people all over the nation for your courage in writing this resolution. Other parishes have also followed your lead and asked to withdraw from Common Core. And this is commendable, but there is one thing that I would like to address at this point, is if there is any liability involved in allowing Common Core in our schools. Now, I realize that Mr. White has stepped back his application of Common Core to try to implement it in a incremental way, but that's like giving poison to children, very small doses at a time instead of a large dose. Common Core truly is poison to our children, and I do believe that this board has the best interest of children in mind. You have many, many scenarios that you have developed with lawyers and with doctors, firemen, policemen, to involve them all in programs that address problems such as fires, intruders, and other problems, natural storms, ice storms even. You have all kinds of things in mind. However, has the liability been addressed for the application of Common Core? I think that this school board would be wise to sue Bessie to withdraw from Common Core, because you will be liable when these children fail, and this will lead to failure. Common Core has not been proven, and it is based on standards that are not based in expert, expert testimony. The experts that were asked to sign on to Common Core, two of them, one of them named Sandra Stotsky, I'm sure that y'all are aware of her, she wouldn't sign off on it, because these standards were shady. Those were her exact words, shady. Now, I don't know who wants to involve their children in a shady deal. We don't. I see my time is up, so I'll relinquish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roster. Ms. Lee Barrios.
Lee Barrios, retired teacher. I hope Patrick Flanagan hasn't left. I told him I was going to brag on him first. I was privileged to teach Patrick in seventh grade, and I have to say that he was one of the very few students who was ever able to put one over on me, and he tried that on a regular basis. So, I know that if you- So I know that if he has a career in government, he's going to be very successful. An editorial by George Will that appeared in The Advocate today addresses the essence of the problem with Common Core standards, which does, without debate, represent a national standardization of curriculum and testing for the children in our schools. I thought it had an important message and is extremely relevant. Why is local control of our school systems so important, and what can we do to retain it? The only valid resistance to local control that I have heard is also one that offers, on the flip side, a solution. Here's the pernicious argument put forth by so-called reformers and proponents of CCSS, which is designed to perpetuate divisiveness in order to remove local control and make the standardization of curriculum so inviting. It's been said by liberals that conservatives want local control of the curriculum so they can push their agenda. Guess what? It's been said by conservatives that liberals want local control of the curriculum so they can push their agenda. I believe that strategy has backfired now that the silver bullet of national standards, testing, and curriculum has been unveiled. Several things have resulted. First, a large segment of the public is now engaged in the conversation about the importance of a locally controlled, community-driven system of public education. Schools they pay for, schools they send their own children to, and schools the success of which drive the success of our local economy. That this public wants to participate in making sure that their schools reflect their vision of what and how education should be delivered, what constitutes learning, and probably most importantly, what that means for the future welfare of their own children. And lastly, the future of public education lies in facilitating that melting pot concept that our country was built on by requiring, not just encouraging or pretending to encourage, but requiring collaboration between all these divergent thinkers who want so desperately to be active stakeholders, parents, educators, taxpayers, and citizens, to bring consensus about the future of public education, and particularly their concerns about curriculum. A top-down governance structure of public education has evolved since its beginnings with the town's little red schoolhouse, but now we've got to take notice and take advantage of the crisis that has been created by so-called reformers who seek to replace the whole system with autonomous privately-controlled but publicly-funded charter schools that will deliver a national curriculum and require that they be controlled by a top-down federal Department of Ed. I'll be through in just a minute. We have to start cleaning our own house, so to speak, by transforming our own top-heavy district systems into a collaborative model that retains the value and efficiency of departmentalizing administrative, policymaking, and education delivery, but turning that chain-of-command mentality into a mutual, mutually respectful model of shared responsibility and shared authority that offers the best that educators, parents, board members elected by the community, and appointed administrative leaders have to offer. We have to understand and address the fact that this issue of national versus local control is the crux of the current reform movement. Our efforts to wrest control from the hugely funded private and political interests that fuel it can take many forms, not the least of which was represented in your recent resolution to opt out of Common Core. Six other districts have followed, and I support this board in finding ways such as exerting influence in the upcoming legislative session to continue that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrios, we have a copy of the article you were referring to. Ms. Debbie Sacks.
The St. Tammany Parish School Board back in October unanimously passed a resolution requesting that the governor remove our state from Common Core. Thus far, seven other parishes have also adopted our resolution. Others have come up with their own resolutions to protect their children. Why the concern? On February 20th, several experts in English Language Arts and Mathematics retained by the architects of the Common Core are so concerned, and we are so grateful to them, that they will be flying into Baton Rouge to testify why they refuse to sign off on these standards. One of the experts on the ELA standards, Dr. Sandra Stotski says, and I quote, "Everyone bought into these standards, and now there is a lot of damage to undo. Local school districts should be suing their state boards of education for not insisting on the ability to review the standards or on an authentic validation before accepting them. There was no legal basis to accept the standards for the states. The rights and responsibilities of local districts were reduced, if not taken away, by the state Board of Ed's vote to adopt Common Core with all its strings. They didn't consult with local school boards first and let them know what they were up to before they voted to adopt Common Core." And I will add to her comments that no one notified or asked parental permission to share more than 750,000 public schoolchildren's social security numbers. I can't reiterate the importance of local control, and I thank each and every one of you for supporting parents and children in this state.
Thank you, Ms. Sacks. Sarah Wood.
Good evening. One of the issues raised by the Common Core State Standards Initiative that is of primary concern is the collection, storing, and sharing with third parties of student data, including personally identifiable information, without parental consent, or even knowledge, I'll say. As a result of this, we are going to see several bills this legislative session, hopefully addressing this very serious matter. In light of all this, I want to request tonight that our school board take all necessary measures to publicly disclose on its website the existence, character, and nature of any and all personally identifiable information from education records, that it directly or indirectly, through third-party contracts with vendors or otherwise, maintains and with whom that personally identifiable information is shared outside of the school district, and why it is shared, and further, where within the district that personally identifiable information is maintained. I have spent the last several months not just fighting all of Common Core, but trying to get answers to questions related to data. I've been trying to obtain clear answers from the state as to what it does with all of this data that it collects, and with whom it stores the data, and with whom it shares this data. I still do not have clear answers, or any real answers whatsoever. This is my children's information, even my information, and information on their teachers. And if we lived in a country or a state with leaders truly respectful of freedom and my right to privacy, I would already know these answers, because I would have given informed consent to that data being collected, stored, and shared. Yet I do not have, I do not have the information, and I have not given informed consent. So, in the spirit of freedom and respect for my privacy and that of my children, I ask that you please take the lead, like you did with the resolution for which we are all very grateful, I ask that you take the lead on these concerns and change whatever protocol or procedures within your power to clearly and expressly inform parents and obtain express and informed consent before doing anything at all with this data in the future. I thank you very much for everything you do and how you respond to our concerns. I would also like to let you know about the Common Core Forum, to which Debbie referred to, that will be on February 20th, I can send that information out to you all. We have a lot of, I have been working very closely with legislators all around the state, and we will see a lot of bills being presented as to Common Core and data collection and sharing. But if we have these, we've put together this forum, parents with no financial backing from Bill Gates or anyone else, and if we don't have the people to show up to support it, I just feel that that would just say something about this movement, and it's very important. So I would really like to see school board members show up and find out about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda items. First one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 12th, 2013. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Bettencourt, second, by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item B is approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on December 19th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Jeter, second, from Mr. Harrell. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item C is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to December 12th, 2013. Cheryl H. Blappert, Bonnie E. Cole Elementary, 33.29 years, 28.51 years in St. Tammany Parish. Charles B. Smallwood, Boyette Junior High, 25 years, 11.53 years in St. Tammany Parish. Laura S. Morris, Harrison Curriculum Center, 31.62 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Kristen R. Elliott, Lancaster Elementary, 20.12 years, 15.51 years in St. Tammany Parish. Kristy L. Hudnall, Beschenrich, Monteleone Junior High, 22.51 years, 21.01 years in St. Tammany Parish. Roderick C. Barber, Pearl River High, 7.02 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Wendy R. Esparus, Trifuncta Middle, 25.01 years, 17.51 years in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion to accept those retirement?
Move.
Motion for Ms. Sealy, second, by Ms. Bellisario. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to December 12th, 2013. Carla L. Hyde, Alton Elementary, 29.54 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Elizabeth G. Hillby, Bonnie E. Cole Elementary, 22.19 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Teresa Snyder, Central Office, 27.22 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Helen W. Teis, Creekside Junior High, 29.72 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia W. Holden, Pitcher Junior High, 13.43 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Elaine O. Michellette, Transportation Center, 11.82 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do we have any, do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mullitt, a second by Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. All right. We have approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole, Business Affairs Administrative Meeting, held on January 9th, 2014. Mr. Durman.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. We have just one recommendation, and that is recommends the acceptance of the policy as per Act 87 of the 2013 legislative session, requiring schools to provide certain accommodations for employees to express breast milk. And if there's any questions, Mr. Javie is well-versed on this. And I say move.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Durman, we have a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Is that it, Mr. Durman? Thank you so much. All right, item F is certification of board members, Elizabeth B. Heinz, Neil M. Henigan, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack, Luke III, Charles T. Harrell, Rowan V. Tipton, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Sealy, Robin P. Mullitt, Ronald Ron Bettencourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, James Ronnie Pink Sr., John C. Lamarck, Ray A. Alfred, and Mary Kay Bellisario, in completion of one hour of training for 2014, presented on January 9th, 2014, as mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute 1753. Mr. Falls.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, I do certify that the board members just named did indeed attend the training that was presented on January 9th, 2014, and should be awarded the credits for that participation.
Thank you very much for that. That brings us to our announcements. First of all, we would like to thank the 7th and 8th grade students from Monteleone Junior High School for the beautiful artwork on display in the atrium this month. Their principal is Ms. Donna Addison, and their art elective teacher is Ms. Tanya Hindren. We would also like to thank the Fountain Blue High Jazz Band for their outstanding performance before tonight's meeting. Their principal is Mr. Johnny Vitranno, and their band director is Mr. Lee Hicks. Schools and offices will close on Monday, January 20th, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, and a special board meeting will be held on Thursday, January 23rd, for the purpose of expulsion appeal hearings. We would need a motion now to go into executive session. Okay, Mr. Luke, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, just wanted to announce once again about the egg show and so on, livestock going on at the barn tomorrow, and on Saturday, everyone's invited, the dinner's at 4 o'clock, and the sale is at 6 o'clock there at the fairgrounds, so I just wanted to mention that again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luke, we do have an executive session requested for the item on the agenda. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? I have a motion by Ms. Bellisario, a second by Mr. Luke. Do we have any comments from the board? Comments from the public? We are now in executive session.